Thank you. Yep. I'd like to welcome everyone to the April 17th Town Council meeting, and we will start, as always, with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So tonight, we have Counselor Burns calling in, and just before we get started, Counselor Burns, I just need to ask for the record if it was not practical for you to be here tonight.
No, it was not practical.
Thank you. And is there anyone else in the room with you?
No.
Thank you. And then, we had a non-public prior to this meeting, and so we just need a motion to seal those minutes, please.
I make a motion to seal the minutes.
Second.
Thank you. Call the roll.
Counselor Finch.
Aye.
Counselor Sanders.
Here. Aye.
Counselor Dumont.
Aye.
Counselor Kuiper.
Aye.
Counselor Cast.
Aye.
Counselor Burns.
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And so then, the first item that we have is a public forum. Is anyone here for a public forum? Didn't think so. And then, the next item that we have is for the Town Council to consider acceptance of minutes, and so we have our April 3rd, 2019 meeting minutes. I take a motion to approve those minutes, please.
I'd actually like to make one correction.
Oh, first, we'll take the motions.
Oh, okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the April 3rd, 2019 meeting.
Second.
No, would be the...
Okay. I'd like to make one correction to the minutes. On page three, line 90, I'd like to change Counselor Slater to Counselor Sanders. Page three, line 90. Should read Counselor Sanders.
Any other corrections or... Okay. Sina?
Counselor Finch.
Aye.
Counselor Sanders.
Aye.
Counselor Dumont.
Aye.
Counselor Kuiper.
Aye.
Counselor Cast.
Aye.
Counselor Burns.
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein.
Aye.
Motion passes.
And our next item is a report of the Town Administrator. Obviously, the Town Administrator's not here. I don't know if he had any... Did he leave any?
No.
And then, there was also department reports as a part of the report of the Town Administrator, so if anyone has any comments, or questions, or concerns, now would be the time to address those.
Nice work on the Tiger House.
It does. It looks fantastic.
It's great.
I think a lot of people saw it at the marathon, right? It was open house as well. That was great timing.
Will there be any other open houses besides that day?
Um, I don't know what their plans are. When there's an event like that, they'll open it up, so I don't know if there are any other events that would warrant that. Great. So the next item on our agenda are committee reports. Anyone have any committee reports?
I'll be brief, but just a reminder that this Saturday, April 20th, from 9:00 a.m. until noon, there'll be a volunteer cleanup at Heron Point, and the gate should be fully operational by then, so a good kind of reopening of the park.
How does the gate operate?
Uh, it's gonna be on a timer for hours of operation, so we can change those based on sunrise to sunset, or dusk to dawn, sorry. Dawn to dusk. And then, it's got remote controls for anybody, for emergency personnel, again. That being said, it can also be emergency personnel, if the remote doesn't work for whatever reason, there's a battery backup, so there's plenty of ways to access it.
So it's basically open dusk to dawn, you said, right? Automatically?
Yeah.
Planning Board had two sidewalks on Saturday, this past Saturday, one for the 10 Norton Lane from Post, it's a major site applic... Is it called a major site application? A review application for a golf driving range and practice areas development, and the other one was the monopole by the... What's it called? The facilities up on the hill.
Under fire. The fire station. It's the fire station, too. Yes.
So, yeah. That was, it's gonna go up on the hill, up above it. Wasn't too muddy.
It was rainy, but it wasn't too muddy. Any other committee reports? I have one. So the Energy and Environment Committee, we haven't met since our last meeting, but the composting program has begun, and I wanted to share a video that Don Sanders, who's one of the Energy and Environment Committee members, and has been really instrumental in pushing this forward, so he completed a video that's now being shared on Channel 13, and we've shared it on social media, and you may recognize a narrator, so I'm just gonna share, it's like, you know, three minutes long.
Newmarket Public Works Department has recently begun a residential food waste composting program at the transfer station on Ashwamp Road. The program, which was promoted by the Energy and Environment Advisory Committee, is designed to reduce the amount of organic material being put into landfills, reduce the amount of methane gas created, and reduce solid waste tipping fees. An added benefit is that the town will receive compost, which will either be used for town landscape projects, or be distributed to residents. Here are some things you need to know about the program. There is no cost for a resident to participate. This is a BYOB program. You must bring your own bucket or green compostable bag. Compostable green bags are optional, but highly recommended. At this time, the town is not selling buckets or compostable bags. They can be purchased at local hardware or big box stores. Mr. Fox Composting of Maine will be hauling our waste to their facility. We will be following the requirements set forth on Mr. Fox's signs that are posted at the transfer station and on the town website. Since this is a commercial composting program, we can accept many items that cannot go into your backyard compost pile. Mr. Fox will accept all food scraps, including meat, chicken, fish, shellfish, bones, and dairy items. Please review the signage at the transfer station for other acceptable items. Plastic bags, straws, and styrofoam are not allowed. Until we determine the demand, please refrain from composting pizza boxes, as they take up a lot of room in the bins. To make composting easier, we would suggest the following. Use a small, one-gallon kitchen bin to collect your food scraps before they are dumped into a bucket. Stainless steel with a close-fitting lid is best. A three-gallon compostable bag makes a great liner. A five-gallon plastic bucket to collect your kitchen waste and transport it to the transfer station. A screw-top gamma lid allows easy access, and keeps in smells and keeps out critters. Both items can be purchased at your local hardware or big box store. Food waste collection is during normal transfer station hours. We encourage everyone to participate in our food waste composting program.
I think we've got a new career for him.
Yeah, he's hired.
Yeah, this is what he used to do where he worked. He used to do the videos for FireEye and Derry.
I have a Mac, so I don't, I feel completely useless with it. Is that thing posted somewhere? So they're playing it on Channel 13. It's been on, we've been shared on Facebook in a couple different forums.
It's somewhere on the town website.
It is, okay.
Not easily found.
Like most things.
So, I mean, he, we had just, was it yesterday? Two days, just a couple days ago, so it's all very brand-new. Yeah.
With it only being the first few days, have we seen some good turnout?
Oh, for the program?
Yeah.
I don't know what the numbers are yet.
Okay.
So we haven't, we haven't heard any numbers. I mean, I know that when I brought my compost last weekend, no, not this past weekend, but the weekend before, the bin was about half-full, so that's promising.
Yeah.
It's gonna take some time, for sure. Have you guys been since?
Yeah, Don said the bins are usually half-full or more, so.
Good.
So, yeah.
I'm glad.
And I think as the word spreads, it'll just get better.
Well, definitely a bunch of people talking about it. I just haven't been down there yet myself, so I wasn't sure.
So were there no other committee reports? Then we can move on to old business, and resolutions in the second reading, and the first resolution that we have is Resolution 2018-2019-36, electronic message boards, and I'll take a message, a motion to approve that.
I move to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2018-2019-36 for electronic message boards.
Second.
Any discussion? The Town Administrator obviously isn't here to discuss it. Pretty straightforward.
Was there any word to when exactly is we're gonna get installed, or?
I would imagine if it was approved, it would be fairly quickly. But no, it, there, that wasn't, I didn't see that information.
Do we know who's gonna prepare messages, or what type of messages? Or what the authorization is, or, like, is it some state, right? I'm just curious.
That's an excellent question.
I thought it was like the town clerk's information, like with the... I thought that from what I read. Oh, I'm talking, yeah. I thought that's what, uh...
What he said before.
What it was for. When I looked at the picture, that looked like it was gonna be right next to the, you know, kiosk there, and so you'd be looking for, I don't know, information on, you know, registration and all that stuff.
Yeah. Important dates.
Yeah, I would assume that's kinda...
Basically, town, general town business, is that what it's for?
I think so.
Okay.
That's my, that was my understanding.
I just was curious if they were looking to do anything beyond that, too.
I think there was that, and then, I believe he had made mention at our last meeting as well, any upcoming events, stuff like road races, for example, so just another way of getting that information out there, so you're not necessarily having to go and scour anywhere.
Now, would all three of the message boards have the same message at the same time, or were these meant to have different messages on each board?
I don't care.
There's one outside the town clerk, one outside the council chambers, and one, it sounds like outside the northeast entrance to the town hall.
Um, I don't know. Those are all excellent questions, and I think that if we want to have those answered, we can hold this off for a third reading. And where there's no one to answer those for us, it's tough to... Okay. To vote on. Is that acceptable to everyone? And I don't think we need a motion to do that. We can just go ahead and hold it for a third reading. So now, we have...
I would say there's, yeah, there's a lot of questions. I would probably say that we should probably hold it over until we can get those answered.
Yeah. Great, so let's do that, and then, we'll move on to Resolution 2018-2019-37, which is rescinding of the town's current development restrictions on Lot 13 at Moody Point, and replacing it with new restrictive covenants as set forth by the Nature Conservancy.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2018-2019-37, rescinding of the town's current development restrictions on Lot 13 at Moody Point, replacing it with the new restrictive covenants as set forth by the Nature Conservancy, Community Development Rec... Oh, sorry.
Second.
And I think that we have a presentation?
Good evening. Gina Weinstein, members of the board. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. We are here this evening, and I'd like to introduce to you a couple of individuals. I'm here with Gina McClure, who is from the Nature Conservancy. I'm also here with Trish Simon, who's here on behalf of the Moody Point Community Association, and her lovely husband, whom I think we all know. And so, we have a... We have a brief presentation. Gina has put together an excellent power presentation. She presented it to the planning board, and I thought maybe the public would like to see it. We are here this evening requesting the Town Council to approve the attached resolution, which will authorize the Town Administrator to rescind the existing conservation restrictions that the town has placed on Lot 13, which is the Loverland Creek at Moody Point, and replacing it with a new covenant, restrictive covenant, that would be placed on the land by the Nature Conservancy, which would allow the Nature Conservancy to move forward with the outright acquisition and a fee simple transfer of the property from the current owner, Walter Cheney, to the Nature Conservancy. Without getting into a lot of detail and a lengthy discussion which led us to this point, there have been discussions ongoing for several years between the Nature Conservancy, the town, the owner, of course, Mr. Cheney, and the Moody Point Community Association, about the long-term stewardship, if you will, of Lot 13. And as a result of our discussions and negotiations, we feel at this point that it's in the best interest of all concern that there be long-term stewardship of this very important, significant environmental resource, and that that be vested in the Nature Conservancy, because there was an overall feeling that they were better equipped to be able to manage this harsel long-range. This proposal has been reviewed by the Planning Board at their meeting on March 19th, and it was unanimously approved, and the Planning Board reviewed it in relation to what the original intent of the Moody Point approval was, which was to basically preserve the Loverland Creek in perpetuity from future development. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Gina for the power presentation, and then I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. So, let's see, to advance it, I think I need to stand here. Can you, but I also don't wanna speak into a microphone, or can I?
That's a wireless mic right there, if I can just grab that.
Okay. I don't think we need the lights off, do you? Can you, can see it fine?
Yeah, it's good.
So thank you, Diane, for the introduction, and thank you for having me here, and for my encore performance.
Oh, and the TV does pull out, if that's helpful.
What?
The TV pulls out. You can tilt it.
So that you all can see me?
Yeah.
That's a great idea.
Very nice.
Mine at home does this, it's just a little smaller.
I think that's good.
So I think in your packet, you have this map, and that might be helpful to look at. Okay. So I'm just gonna give you, I have like five slides. I'm gonna just give you a brief overview of what our involvement in this project has been, and how we got to where we are tonight with this, and so, this is the property, actually, you may be familiar with our office on Bay Road. This is taken from in front of that office on Bay Road, across this property that we own, and then, this marsh here is the land in question, the Cheney parcel, along with some of the upland forest on the other side of the marsh that abuts the Moody Point development. So I'm just gonna give you a timeline, 'cause it's a rather complicated story, but we've actually been working with Walter Cheney over a number of years, even before 2013, when we got involved in this particular parcel. But he came to us in 2012, 2011, 2012, to see if we could help him protect the property, the Lot 13, and he was having discussions with the town at the same time. And we worked with him, and in concert with the Natural Resources Conservation Service, which is a division of the USDA, I worked with them, and they purchased an easement over the property, most of the property, almost all of his property, and so then, it was protected by that easement. It's called a WRP easement, a Wetlands Reserve Program easement. And that was finally purchased in 2014. In concert with that purchase of the easement over Lot 13, we negotiated an option to purchase the property from Walter, the fee of the property, with the easement on it, and that was to be executed in 2017. So during the interim time between 2014 and 17, Mr. Cheney had a lot of discussions with the town, but he was bound by that option to sell the land to us with the easement on it in 2017. Along about 2015, the town of Newmarket recorded these notice of development restrictions on the property, on top of the WRP easement. And we looked at those and realized that back in 1965, I think, when they, those were designed, there were, it was kind of an old-fashioned easement, a list of restrictions, many of which would have been very difficult for us to monitor and enforce, things like, you can't walk your dog on the property. So how would we, as a, as an agency, make sure that nobody walked their dog on the property? And there were some others in there that we realized we simply couldn't undertake to enforce. So we started discussions with the town, you know, what are we gonna, how are we gonna, we can't accept this property. We can't go ahead with our purchase of the property with these restrictions on them. And yet, of course, we understood the town's desire to protect the entire property, we just couldn't do it with those, that, those particular restrictions on it. So we started exploring alternative solutions to the problem, and one of those was to get the NRCS to cover, make their easement cover the entire property. There was a two-and-a-half acre parcel left out along Cushing Road, and another small piece on the backside of one of the homes. And so, the concept was to cover the whole property, and we hoped that they would just be able to extend their easement on the entire property. But being a federal agency, that's a lot more complicated than it sounds, and they told us that they couldn't do that. So then, the town and we started talking about an alternative solution, and the best that we could come up with together was to remove the notice of development restrictions, the old easement that was on the property, and put on, on top of it instead, in the areas where the WRP easement was not effective, another set of restrictions that we were comfortable granting to the town, and that would, would protect the property as the town intended it to be protected. So, this is just an overview of the property, and this shows you the two parcels that had been left out of the easement that covers the entire piece. So those are the two properties over which we intend to grant Declaration of Restrictive Covenants to the town, that I think you have in your, in your packet. And so, the proposal is, it's, it's more complicated, it sounds more complicated than it really is, but basically, we're saying that the, the planning board, as Diane said, is proposing that you remove the notice of... is proposing that you remove the notice of development restrictions and replace them with the Declaration of Restrictive Covenant on those excluded areas, and that this happen in concert with our purchase of the property. So that we won't, you will remove the restrictions, we will purchase the property, we will grant you the easement. And the end result will be that the entire parcel will be protected by restrictions, and the Nature Conservancy will own the property and manage it. We have no plans to do anything with that property, but make sure that it stays the way it is.
So, if you have any questions? I think I finished? Yeah. Any questions?
So, are going to be any increase in the public access to that space?
Um, no.
I know the Sweet Trail goes...
The Sweet Trail is, yeah, the Sweet Trail is not near here. But if you look on your map, the Sweet Trail starts on Bay Road, and it goes up between, yeah, between the green area and the brown area. And it goes up to Dame Road and then onto Dame Road and north from there.
Okay. Isn't there a part of the Sweet Trail that goes across the road?
What?
Doesn't the end of the Sweet Trail go across the road? And there's like a...
It does, and it goes down into the...
Yeah, like to right there?
Yeah, to the Knox property, yeah.
Okay, and that's next door?
Yeah.
Okay, but there's not going to be any more trails coming?
No, no.
Okay.
We don't have any interest in having trails on the property, on this land, on the salt marsh. I mean, people can wander there. People do wander around in the salt marsh and that, but we don't have any formal trails there.
Okay, but there is public access, I guess is my question?
Yes, there is. Yeah, we have public access on almost all of our properties.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions? I know this has been years in the making, so I appreciate everyone's work on this. So, and thank you, thank you to the Simons and to everyone at Moody Point who's been working on this, and to Diane for her work too.
So, I'm happy to see any land in conservation. Especially this one. Right, right, especially, yeah.
It's a really gem of a property.
Yeah.
For the record, could I just read this thing that we made a few minutes ago?
Sure, please.
About the Moody Point Communities Board. Thanks, I think I speak so loudly I don't need a microphone.
Yeah, they need it for the TV.
Oh, home, okay.
My name is Trish Simon, and John Badger and I live on Cushing Road and represent the Moody Point Community Association. We are here in support of the ownership and easement changes proposed for Lot 13 adjacent to the Moody Point community. We have been involved in protecting Lot 13 for many years. During this time, we have resisted fencing, view restrictions, and other threats leveled against Moody Point homeowners living adjacent to Lot 13. We sought ownership changes and worked in the background with Newmarket attorneys supporting the litigation to protect the property. We have also worked with the Nature Conservancy as they slowly moved towards ownership. We appreciate the tenacity and perseverance of Diane Hardy, Steve Fournier, and other Newmarket officials in initiating successful litigation to retain the original conservation protections issued by the Newmarket Planning Board in 1985. This has quite literally saved the property. So, we are hoping that this all goes forward and that all these changes are approved and that the Nature Conservancy will soon assume ownership, and the entire property will be placed under a unified conservation easement.
Thank you. So, if there are any other further questions, please call the roll.
Counselor Finch?
Aye.
Counselor Sanders?
Aye.
Counselor Dumont?
Aye.
Counselor Kuiper?
Aye.
Counselor Cast?
Aye.
Counselor Burns?
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we'll go ahead and move on to new business. And so, the first is for the town council to consider appointments. And we have two tonight, and so I would accept a motion to appoint Peter Nelson to the Energy and Environment Advisory Committee for a term to expire March 2020.
I'll make a motion to appoint Peter Nelson to the Energy and Environment Advisory Committee for a term to expire March 2020.
Second.
Any questions, comments? I will say that I'm very excited to have another member of the Energy and Environment Committee, so there are three more positions. Two. Not as of yet, until it comes across our desk.
Yes, this is...
So, please, yes, yes.
And I'll say, I talked to Peter about this like probably at least a year ago and told him about what we were doing. So, I think it helps for all of us, you know, keep the conversations going with random people, because you never know who might, and at the time, I think he was actually on the planning board. But now, he's doing something else that he has more time. So, it always helps to kind of chat it up with random people.
And he's got some really relevant experience and a relevant background, so he's going to be a great addition to the committee. So, please call the roll, please.
Counselor Finch?
Aye.
Counselor Sanders?
Aye.
Counselor Dumont?
Aye.
Counselor Kuiper?
Aye.
Counselor Cast?
Aye.
Counselor Burns?
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
And next, I would accept a motion to appoint John Green to the Newmarket Community Development Corporation for a term to expire December 2021.
I'll make a motion to appoint John Green to the Newmarket Community Development Corporation for a term to expire December 2021.
Second.
Any questions, comments?
I just have one question. I did not realize the NCDC was actually appointed by the town council. Is it a separate entity from other councils, like other boards?
Other committees, yes, it is. I can't speak to the history of it, because I don't know. I think that'd be a great question for Steve, unless somebody else knows that information.
Okay. Yeah, I just didn't know we'd ever be going on that, but...
So, quick synopsis, what would their duties and responsibilities be?
I think the last thing that they did was they were spearheading the contract or the negotiations with the mill.
Okay, so they're the ones that are kind of in limbo right now. They're not really working on anything.
Yeah, I believe that they were the ones that got the mill going, right?
Yeah, but they meet pretty regularly. So, they're not really, I wouldn't say that they're in limbo. I don't know exactly what they're doing.
I think they're talking about the Economic Development Committee, which is separate.
All right.
They don't report back to us with any sort of regularity.
Okay.
I've never seen them come before.
Okay, got it.
Yeah. Kind of like the Lamprey River Advisory Committee. Like, we appoint people to that as well.
Kind of like library trustees, they just go off and do their thing with the library.
Exactly, exactly. So, the roll, please.
Counselor Finch?
Aye.
Counselor Sanders?
Aye.
Counselor Dumont?
Aye.
Counselor Kuiper?
Aye.
Counselor Cast?
Aye.
Counselor Burns?
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
And so, next, we have any correspondence to the council. I don't believe that there is any, unless anyone has anything. And then, closing comments by town councillors, so...
Just something quick. I met with the Newmarket Business Association, and I've actually been invited to attend their board meetings once a month. And the one, two things, of course, that they're interested in is parking, which is the ever-present issue. And the other was something about way signs. And they said it had been mentioned in the past, but they weren't sure what had happened to that. And particularly right now in regard to the Stone Church, wanting to have some kind of a way sign on the main street so that it would point in the right direction. And that there is going to be some development of a barn up near there that will become four studio and retail spaces possibly in the future. And that they would want some signage as well directing people up in that direction. So, I told them I would ask, what is the status of way signs for the town? Is that just kind of an issue that's sitting on the side? Is somebody working on that?
That would be a question for the town administrator.
Okay, so I'll ask him next time.
I think for the Stone Church thing itself, I believe when the owner was here, he said that they were working to get that approved by some folks at the state to have one of those like landmark signs. They were waiting until obviously we reversed the street. That is a good question, though, because it's been a little while.
Right, but that's something different. So, the historical, or the blue sign, is that, yeah. So, that's something different. I recall a conversation about the way signs, although I don't think it was at the council.
Yeah, this is more like you see in seaside towns, where they're pointing to businesses that are up streets, so that you would walk right past them and never even know they were one block up.
Is signs like that, is that DPW or is that police?
Signs like that would fall under Mike Hoffman and Co. enforcement.
Okay.
Yep.
And there was some discussion about just the direction of the road, how that might have limited the ability to direct people, obviously, when it was a different direction. And something to do with the historical status, which they're now on the National Registry of Historic Places, that might help with some of that, too.
Right.
They had made comments about it being too difficult to locate the business, having to go off and around, and part of his arguments as to why we should change the street.
And I thought it was going to be more of like a historic sign as opposed to like just like a street sign, reflective street sign. I thought it would be more of like a...
Shouldn't I? Were you thinking like the, like the, okay, for example, like on Route 4, there's like the Piscataqua Bridge site.
Yeah, the green one.
Yeah, the big green sign.
I was, from what I recall, it was something more like that than like a reflective sign.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I don't know what it would, what shade it would take or what it would look like, but it'd be something more like that directing people up.
Right, so as far as the way signs go, I think, I don't know if, I don't know where anything's at. It hasn't come before the council.
Okay.
So, I'm not sure where that was left. I don't know if it needs to go before the planning board. Steve would be able to answer those questions when he returns.
With parking, I know there's some ideas kicking around, and part of that would also connect with some signage going south on 108, just to remind people that there are actually quite a few spots on the side, because I think sometimes people drive through town and don't, you know.
There's some off on Bay Road as well.
Bay Road, yeah.
Right. Any other closing comments?
I just like to say, I think the community church is definitely still taking donations for the Big Sins of the Fire. And they've raised, I don't know what the number is now, but it's, they've done some pretty good, there's been some really good donations, so, you know, shout out to anyone that donated. And if you haven't yet, I know they're taking them at the fire station, community church, at the Stone Church, probably at the police station, yeah.
It's my understanding, three of the four families have found housing.
Yeah, I think you're right, yeah.
And the fourth family, they're still looking.
And thank you, I'll say, to all of the first responders who assisted with that, because it, you know, it's a, it's obviously a tragedy, but it's also a miracle that no one was injured in that process, so... Yeah, so thank you to our fire department and police department. And then, I had, oh, did you want something?
I'll let you go last. Can I go first?
Yeah.
Because I think it's going to correlate on the same day, I believe.
Oh, good.
So, next Saturday, a week from the Saturday on April 27th, the police department is once again participating in the DEA's Drug Takeback Day. So, if you have unused medications, prescriptions, please feel free to bring them to the PD between 10:00 and 2:00. There'll be an officer there with a big box. You do not have to leave your name, you can remain anonymous. We just ask that you don't bring any needles or any liquids. But 10:00 and 2:00, next Saturday, the 27th.
Actually, worth recommending, if folks did have liquid medications disposed of, what would be the best spot for them?
Putting me on the spot right now. I don't have an answer for you on that.
Okay, no issue.
But that's a great question, and I will send the council an email with an answer.
Don't put them down the drain.
Don't put them down the drain. Please don't put them down the drain.
I have three that I need to get rid of, and one of them's a liquid. I'm obviously not going to flush it or anything. I don't know what to do with them.
That's a great question, and if you give me a couple of days, I can get an answer for you.
Yeah, appreciate it, thanks.
Sure.
Thank you. And then, I wanted to mention that Newmarket Cares is having its second annual event, but it's also in conjunction with the roadside cleanup, which is in its, I think, fifth year. So, we have two dates, Saturday, May 4th, and we'll be, it's from 7:30 to 4:00. So, we'll be doing projects throughout the town during that time. And then, Friday, May 10th, it's 11:00 to 4:30. So, keep an eye out for the yellow shirts. They're hard to miss, they're very bright this year. And I think it's a great opportunity for our town to really come together and do projects for, it's a combination of projects. There, some of them are municipal land, you know, things like Shanda Park. And we're going to do the, we're going to do a cleanup at the Pocket Park this year. There might be some projects at the rec center that get done. But then, there's also residents who need assistance with, you know, yard work or maybe some, there's a ramp that needs to get built this year. And so, it's projects like that. So, if you know anybody who is either in need of some assistance or can help, there's a signup genius, we've used that, we've put that out there on social media. Or you can email me, and I'd be more than happy to help you navigate that process so that we can get people signed up. So, if it's, if you have an hour, if you have a day, it doesn't matter, we'll take all the help that we can get on that day.
Tony, just for clarification, the roadside cleanup will be both of those days?
Mm-hmm, yep, yep. So, if you're, and that's the thing, with the signup genius, so that, for people who don't know, signup genius is just a digital way to sign up, to volunteer. And then, but if, for any reason that is daunting or you're not sure how to navigate that, you can email, you can email newmarkercareday@gmail.com. You could email myself, you could email Patty Marsden, and we'll help you get connected with volunteering, so... So, yeah, and then, and when you do sign up, to say what it is that you're interested in doing. So, if that's roadside cleanup, if that's painting, if that's managing a site, there's all different levels.
What kind of folks can ask for help with projects?
Anyone.
And what type of projects?
Anyone who needs assistance.
Last year, Donna and I did yard work with a team of young ladies from the high school, and it was a woman who'd been recently widowed. And the idea of going out and cleaning up her yard in the spring, her husband had been ill, they hadn't gotten to it the year before, so there was quite a bit of yard work to do, and it was just very daunting for her. So, a team of six of us showed up and got all the yard work done that day.
Great. There've been some other, you know, elderly people who haven't been able to get to their yards. There's a younger person who needs a ramp built this year to make their home accessible. So, that's a project that's, that people are looking at doing, so... Just a little bit of everything. And that's all I have. And if there are no other comments, then I will consider the meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amy.
All right.
Bye.
Have a good night. Have a good night.
Bye.